Mr. Fitzmaurice, are we ready?
No.
You've still got 10 minutes, but we've got to open up.
We've got to open up.
I said correct it.
I'm ready.
All right, I'll let you know. Trying to sit, now you may be nervous, Barbara, because I've not sat.
Yeah, you're looking pretty good, I have to tell you.
Leave to the right.
How was the election?
Okay.
I'm ready.
Are we ready? Hey, and Mr. Fitzmaurice, we're ready. Great. Good evening, and welcome to the May 10th Portsmouth Town Council meeting. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the vote of silence for women and hearts. Thank you. Adam Clark, may we take the roll call? Oh, I'm sorry, you are absolutely right. Housekeeping, for those participating from home on Zoom, there's an icon to raise your hand. A star nine indicates that you want to ask a question. Star six allows you to mute and un-mute.
That's for the phone.
That's for the phone, sorry. And when you are called, please state your name and address for the clerk. Okay. So now, Adam Clark, would you please say your role?
Ms. Jukusas?
Present.
Ms. Abbott? Ms. Buttermeyer?
Here.
Ms. Hamilton?
I'm here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Right here. We do have a form of five. And see, I'll start with the President's Executive Summary. Tonight, there was a accidental leaving out of one of the speakers, and our town solicitors has advised us that pursuant to Section 42-46-6 of the Rhode Island General Laws, we are able to add this person onto the agenda if there is a motion to do so. And the person would be Mr. Brian Hodge. He represents Commerce, Rhode Island, and he is only giving us informational presentation. So do I have a motion to allow Mr. Hodge to be added to the agenda as a new business item?
So moved. Second.
The motion in a second. Could we take a roll call?
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. We have to actually take a second step, and that is to move, to have a motion, to have a motion to put Mr. Hodge to the beginning of the agenda because of the schedule. Do I have a motion to do that? He would be, let's see, Adam Clark, where would he be on the agenda?
You could move him to the office.
Okay, so I need a motion to have Mr. Hodge moved to be before his.
So moved. Second.
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. See. To the presentations and recognition. This one would be the proclamation in commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the Portsmouth Police Department. And so I will read that. Whereas the Portsmouth Police Department was established on May 9, 1921, with the appointment of William J. Degen as its first Chief of Police. And whereas the Portsmouth Police Department began its expansion in 1942 with the appointment of a second police officer and the purchase of its first police vehicle. And whereas the Portsmouth Police Department today is comprised of 38 full-time police officers, one Pritons Island Public Safety Officer, one Animal Control Officer, and one Records clerk. And whereas the Portsmouth Police Department is a state-accredited law enforcement agency committed to protecting and serving the citizens of the town of Portsmouth with respect and professionalism. And whereas the Portsmouth Police Department has completed 100 years of exemplary service to the town of Portsmouth between May 9, 1921, and May 9, 2021. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Portsmouth hereby commends the Portsmouth Police Department for its 100 years of service to our community. And in recognition thereof, I, Kevin M. Aguirre, who's not here, President of the Portsmouth Town Council, have hereby set my hand and caused the seal of the Town of Portsmouth to be affixed on this 10th day of May, 2021. So thank you so much. This is really terrific, and we appreciate everything that Chief Jus and the rest of the department do for us. Next proclamation is, "The Town of Portsmouth in the State of Rhode Island and the United States of America takes pleasure in offering this proclamation of appreciation and thanks." And you noted that I offered to have Mr. Kelly read this, however, you declined. Okay. "Whereas, the Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, was founded on the compact of 1638. And whereas the founders of the Town of Portsmouth, Rhode Island, considered the connection with your honorable city to honor it with your name. And whereas that we wish to continue to build the strong bond we have formed with yours and other Portsmouth Atlantic Compact communities. And whereas we have been honored by many visits by representatives of your city to our beautiful town, which have included several visits by your Lord Mayors and councilors. And whereas their attendance and participation at the many events that included the 375th Anniversary Celebration in our town strengthened the common bonds and historical links between our two communities and offered a unique and personal sense of friendship, which has been deeply appreciated by the many citizens they have met. And whereas you have offered great hospitality and friendship to our citizens on their official visits and personal visits to the UK that have encouraged continued and expanding relations between our two communities. And whereas on a national perspective, we honor the sacrifices of all the British people in their support for World War I and D-Day of World War II that have been memorialized by your city in annual celebrations. We wish to convey our thanks to all British citizens and in particular those of Portsmouth, UK for their efforts that were essential to victory. And whereas our delegations have thoroughly enjoyed participating in mutual cooperation programs that have been supported by many trips to Portsmouth, UK that have included government, education, religion, military, and cultural leaders throughout York Fair City. And whereas several of our citizens attended last year's Mayor, Lord Mayor making via Zoom due to the coronavirus pandemic. We are aware that York Fair City recently celebrated the 827th anniversary of its founding. We are also aware that you will be installing Portsmouth City Councilor Jonas for his third term as Lord Mayor, the first in times to serve many terms. Also, the first Lord Mayor we were engaged with prior to our 375th anniversary. We congratulate him and all the citizens of the city of Portsmouth. Whereas the Town Council of Portsmouth of the State of Rhode Island has charged our fellow citizen and elected Town Councilor Andrew Kelly to deliver this proclamation. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Town Council President of M.A.R. Portsmouth, Rhode Island, do hereby announce and proclaim to all citizens and set seal here to our special recognition and thanks to the City Council of Portsmouth, United Kingdom, and its citizens. Look forward to our future continued superb relations." So, thank you very much, Mr. Kelly, for delivering that. And we will move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Let's move to the, let's see, we'll be moving to sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. The first item is the,
Move to approve all three license requests for St. Barnabas's Annual Festival and Carnival for their daily liquor license entertainment and big chillers. Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the three St. Barnabas applications listed here as items one, two, and three. We have a motion in second.
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. The next item is the Peddlers License for Mobile Food Establishments. New. There are two, A, My Brother's Jeros, 159 Stonem Drive, Little Socket, one truck. B, Kona Ice Cream, or I'm sorry, Kona Ice Cumberland, Rhode Island. 77 York Avenue, Pawtucket, one truck.
Move to approve both. Second.
Motion second.
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Return as the Board of Licensed Commissioners. Second.
Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. The next item is the minutes of April 26, 27, and 28.
Move to approve as presented. Second.
Second.
Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
This approved six to zero. Thank you. Next, we will move to Town Administrators' Report. Ms. Harina?
Good evening, Madam Vice President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to COVID, just a reminder that capacity limits have increased for a number of different venues. Generally, new capacity limits are 80% of capacity of the venue with a three-foot distancing requirement. There is a more specific overview available at the Rhode Island Department of Health website and also on our town website. Additionally, fully vaccinated people are no longer required to wear masks outdoors when they are at least three feet apart from others. Fully vaccinated means that you have gotten all the required doses of a COVID-19 vaccine as authorized by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration or the World Health Organization. And more than 14 days have elapsed since your final dose. People will still need to wear masks when indoors in public settings. Additionally, people should keep their groups consistent and avoid crowds whenever possible. Additionally, fully vaccinated people no longer have to wear masks outdoors when they are at least three feet apart from each other. So, I'm repeating myself, so please forgive me. Lastly, I want to say that the volunteers who have stepped up to support the high school vaccination clinic have done an outstanding job. This was organized at record time and could not have been executed without their tireless support. The first doses were administered last Friday, and second doses will be administered on May 28, from 12:00 noon to 5:00 p.m. Like to say, a word about the West Main Road Safety Assessment. The Rhode Island Department of Transportation and Federal Highway Authority, through the Rhode Island Highway Safety Improvement Program, are planning a road safety assessment along West Main Road in Portsmouth. This will include multiple intersections between Route 24 and the Middletown Town Line. This roadway segment was chosen for the safety assessment due to observed speeding issues, its crash history, and due to a request from the Portsmouth Police Department and Town Council. The outcome from this safety assessment could potentially lead to improvements through the Rhode Island Department of Transportation over the next few years. We would like to solicit input from the public, which we will pass on to the assessment team. Information to an email address for this purpose will be advertised on the town website starting tomorrow afternoon. I'd also state that we look forward to continuing the Linden Lane Stonewall Repair Program again this year. We are tentatively planning a Tuesday-through-Saturday schedule, beginning with a training workshop on July 13 from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Regular work weekday shifts will be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and then 12:30 p.m. to 3:30 p.m. The second training workshop, we will look to be holding that workshop on July 17 from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We expect us to be a consistent group that will likely only work Saturdays based on their availability. On the non-training Saturdays, the schedule will be 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We'll expect the volunteers to stay for the duration of that time. The program will end on August 28. We will meet with Preserve Rhode Island this week to firm up the schedule and coordinate a plan to reach out to previous volunteers and determine if and how many new volunteers to be added. More information for this program will be posted to our website as it becomes available. And then lastly, it is time again for Portsmouth to solicit nominations for the Annual Portsmouth Award. This award is an annual recognition for an individual, a local business, or an organization that exemplifies the best characteristics of and for Portsmouth. The details for this program and the nomination process will be posted on the town website and in a press release to be issued this week. Nominations will be due at the end of the month, on May 31. Madam Vice President, second, please bear forward.
Thank you, Ms. Harina. We will move to resignations and appointments. The first item is the resignation of Nicholas Credle, Prop. 3, the Housing Authority, Solid Waste Recycling, and Economic Development Committee.
Move to accept with regret and wish Mr. Credle the best of health as he moves to his new home. Second.
Ms. Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Next item, appointments. There are three appointments to the Bristol Ferry Town Events Committee. Margaret Elliott, Ruth Sears, and Kathy Smith.
Move to approve. Seconded.
Motion in second.
Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Melville Park Committee is listed, but is that, we don't list who's on there, but there is an application. It doesn't limit, so we don't list because it's new, so. So do we have, do we, Aaron Lindsey Felder is the, there is one applicant for the Melville Park Committee, Aaron Lindsey Felder.
Second.
Motion in second.
Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Next item is the third item. It will be Mr. Hodge from the Commerce, Rhode Island, what I believe about teaching and current small business grants. Your Hodge?
That's correct. Good evening. Thank you, Council. Very much appreciate you taking the time and allowing me to speak to you this evening. Appreciate the special vote also. I didn't realize you have to take a special vote on my account, but I appreciate it. So as mentioned, I'm here representing Rhode Island Commerce, and this is just an effort to increase communications with all the cities and towns throughout the state about some of our efforts lately and just keeping you up to speed with everything we've got going on, especially with regards to funding and grant opportunities for small businesses. So there have been a number of programs lately. One is the Small Business Relief Grant Program. The application's closed on April 30. It was very successful. We saw a lot of great interest across the state, including Portsmouth. We're currently working with the applicants now through the review and funding stages. So businesses who did apply should hear from us shortly, or they could also hear from our partner, CRF, if they did apply. So if anyone has any questions on that, always reach out to Commerce at 401-521-Help or email us at info@commerceri.com. There's also the Paycheck Protection Program, or PPP. This is a federal SBA program, which is now closed to new applicants. However, we still have technical assistance partners available and willing to assist for loan forgiveness. So if you have applied and you want to make sure that the loan is forgiven as a grant, you can reach out to us, and we can help connect you with CPAs, including the Rhode Island Society of CPAs, who can, at no cost to businesses, provide the technical assistance to help get you through the loan forgiveness program. The email address for that is covid@riscpa.org. So that's covid@riscpa.org. There's also the Restaurant Revitalization Fund, which is another SBA program. This is specifically for restaurants and can cover up to $10 million in losses from 2020. And these are grants, and they can be as small as $1,000. So I encourage all our smaller seasonal restaurants, you're eligible to apply. But again, this is a federal grant program, so we want to make sure that all the restaurants in the state take full advantage of that. You can learn more about that at the SBA website. We can reach out to the Rhode Island Hospitality Association, or again, feel free to contact Commerce as well. There's the Shuttered Venues Operators Grant, which is for performing arts venues, and information for that is on the SBA website also. And in addition to those federal programs, there's one state program that's still up and running, and that's the Childcare Stabilization Fund. And that's a state program in support of childcare businesses, and that's run through the Department of Human Services. Businesses can receive stipends of up to $50,000, and that's for childcare businesses. And the website for that is kidsRI.gov. And applications for that are due May 21st. So that concludes my portion here. Happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions? If anyone's raising their hand. But your contact information will be in our Portsmouth website. So thank you so much, Mr. Hodge.
Thank you very much for having me.
The next item is the proposed changes and revised provisional budget approval of the Town Administrator's Budget. Ms. Harina?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. At the last meeting, the Council voted to hire an Information Systems Manager. The decision was made then to deduct $69,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund to offset the anticipated cost of hiring this manager. Please go to page 48 of the revised proposed budget. So after consulting with our HR Director, IT Consultant, and Contractor, and the School Department IT Manager and his staff, we are proposing a salary of $82,000 for this position together with the Town Standards, Standard Benefits Package. The difference between the proposed salary and benefits and the $69,000 drawn from the Capital Reserve Fund will come from the IT Services line and the operations side of this budget. This line can be safely reduced as the town's reliance on specialized consulting and contract services will be reduced in the advent of this hire. Additionally, since the last review of this budget, the cost for web posting services has increased by $323.07. We have moved that amount to the IT Software and Licenses line from the Town Contingency line found in the expenditure summary. These changes have had no effect on the total budget levy or tax rate. We ask for provisional approval of $275,877 for the Information Technology Budget.
That's not reflected on the screen there, just FYI. Screen's reflected 275, 544, so.
554.
554, excuse me.
By my part, I apologize for that. Let me make sure that 116. Yeah, so it would be 275, 554.
Well, just we're right. You're only 300 bucks off, it's not a big deal, but.
Hold on one second. I'm going to check. Bear with me one second.
Sure.
The amount that I just quoted you is correct. That reflects the addition of the $323.07. So what's reflected on the screen does not have that figure in there. So as I described, we need to take $323.07, we'll take that, we propose we take that from the Town Contingency. We add that to the IT Software and Licenses line, which is why it's a discrepancy in what I just told you. That happened after we posted this budget on Friday. So we ask for provisional approval of $275,877 for the Information Technology Budget.
Move to approve, provisionally approve, $275,877 for the IT Department budget. Seconded.
The second.
Jukusas?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Buttermeyer?
Aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six, zero.
So now if you go to page 35. Okay, page, scroll down just a little bit more slightly. Okay. So we took the $69,000 from the Capital Reserve Fund. So the Capital Reserve Fund amount is now $300,000. And we took the $323.07 from the Town Contingency. And the Town Contingency Fund will now be $49,400. And the Town Contingency Fund will now be $49,472. So we ask for provisional approval of those two months.
Wait a minute. Go over that one again?
So the original amount for Town, the Capital Reserve Fund was $369,000.
Yep.
We took the $69,000 from that line item and applied it to the salary in the IT, which you just approved.
Right.
And then the $323 came out of Town Contingency and was applied to software in the IT budget to cover the difference between what we had anticipated the website hosting service to be and what the final price was.
Okay, so that was taken out, so that 49, 49, 472 is correct?
That is the correct number.
Okay. So then we need a motion to provisionally approve the. What is the title on top of this? Just the two line items? I need to hold the whole.
Those two line items because you're, nothing else changed.
So we'll start with the motion to provisionally approve the Capital Reserve Fund at $300,000.
Second. Motion second. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Benmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six, zero.
A motion to provisionally approve the Town Contingency Fund at $49,472.
Seconded.
Second. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Benmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Then I do, you want a motion to provisionally approve the total other bottom line of $440,297?
We've already approved every other portion of that, so technically you've already approved the 446,297.
But the bottom line has changed to 440,297.
Yeah, that changed as a result of the.
Okay. Okay.
Contingency and the. Reserve Fund. There might be one more change to discuss with Councilor.
Are you finished with your housekeeping?
I have finished with my housekeeping.
Madam President, I would like to make a slight adjustment to two budgets. We have talked at length over the past few months about speeding issues specifically around school zones. We discussed cameras, which I am against, but we also discussed possibly having extra patrols. So I would like to make a motion to move the, to move $30,000 out of the DPW budget underneath their buildings and grounds, which currently sits at $237,800, and move that into the police budget for a new line item to be called whatever, Speed Enforcement Reserve Fund.
So you had mentioned this before I left for the weekend, so we went ahead in anticipation. You might make this motion. We prepared pages for this. Bring up. Page fifty-nine.
And just, these numbers were worked out with the police chief in order to give him some flexibility and provide shifts during the school rush hours. Let's just call it that.
About the middle of that page, you can see we had a line here called School Zone Traffic Enforcement, $30,000. And the addition of that $30,000 to the Police Department budget, so if you go to page sixty, the next page, obviously changed their bottom line by $30,000. So you'll need to, if this, if your motion is approved, then you would need to provisionally approve $7,198,471 for the Police Department.
Okay, so my motion is to move the $30,000 out of the DPW budget, specifically the Maintenance Grounds line, and move it to that Special Reserve Fund for the Police Department.
What page is the DPW?
That's page seventy-three, so if you approve this, I'll show you what we did on page seventy-three.
So I have a motion to $30,000 and add it to the. Okay, it would be seventy-one.
Seven million?
Seven million, 198,471.
Correct.
I'll second that.
I have a couple of questions.
Is Chief Peters though? Chief Peters, I just want to figure this out. How is this going to affect overtime? Are you going to add an hour to?
That's, that's a great question. That's why we put it in the operations line. So it's an operational item, so it can't go over the $30,000. So whatever he assigns to that, we have to stay within that $30,000. Not, not increase budget, so. That's why we did it that way.
So how, how, how much are we going to get for this? Is kind of my question. Because if we're gonna, maybe there's a three-hour shift in there probably, or some kind of thing like that, plus overtime. So how much does this really get us?
They're, Chief, Chief has worked out the numbers.
Mr. Kelly, so based on that figure of $30,000, that would give us approximately 122 four-hour shifts.
Okay.
And Chief Peters, do you believe this is a, do you enforce this actions?
I do. I think, I know there's some concerns about the cameras. I think this is a good step to increase safety in that area. We can have dedicated officers that are just in that school zone. With this money, it'd be, if we, if we based it on the same operations as we do our DOT grant funding, where it's a set rate, we could do 122 shifts out of the 180 days. So I think that would be a great addition to our patrol resources.
Kelly, did you have other questions? Do you have any question? I understand Mr. Greve has a question.
I'm sorry. I raised my hand when I thought Mr. Rayner was done. I've got a more global question to talk about. When, just before you're ready to approve the budget itself.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for the $30,000 addition. For the, what was the name of that?
The School Zone Traffic.
The $30,000 from the DPW maintenance grounds line to the. Yes, to the School Zone Traffic Enforcement line, so that the total now is seventy-one.
Seven.
I'm sorry, 7198,471.
Well, we have to approve two budgets, so let's, let's do the $30,000 first, and then we have to reapprove the provisionally, the DPW budget at the new number, and then the Police Department at the new number.
So your first motion is to approve the $30,000 being moved from the DPW Maintenance Grounds line? Is that your question?
Yeah, that, that line currently sits at $237,800, and that would move to $207,800. That's the line we moved the money from the school capital into.
Seventy-three. And if you scroll down to operation.
Seventy-eight. He wants seventy-eight. Oh, it's off by five.
Keep going down. Or off, I'm sorry. All right, you'll see Maintenance Grounds, 200, the new number would be 207,800. If you don't provisionally approve that number, you'll approve the new. There's actually two.
We have to approve their bottom line number once we're done. If it passes.
Can I just make a comment before we vote? Um, just like, big picture, I'm not against the concept of adding school zone speed enforcement. I think it's a great idea. But if you look at the total numbers on the budget, 23% of our total budget is for public safety in the Police Department, and 6% is for the DPW. I think overall, our town has much greater DPW needs than, than public safety needs, quite frankly, at this point, given the state of maintenance of so many of our facilities. So I'm opposed to moving the number, moving the amount out of DPW and into the Police Budget. I'm not against adding it to the Police Budget, so just to explain my, my, my voting coming up.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'll just say that I think Ms. Abbott is making a really good point. However, if we do what she suggests, we throw us into the situation of having to come back to this provisional improvement and things. And in fact, are we able to make this vote tonight? Given that no one saw this prior to the scheme?
Yes, absolutely. I mean, this was the agenda to go back and address your budget and to provisionally approve the budget. We can make changes at any time to be provisionally approved, and then quite frankly, we can make changes again.
Okay. All right, well, I guess there is currently a motion.
And to Ms. Abbott's point, and I understand that the lack of maintenance that we've done over the past, you know, 50 years catching up to us, but we still have $300,000 of capital contingency that we can utilize for that as well. I, I think the safety of our schoolchildren is paramount, and watching people fly through Bristol Ferry Road, excuse me, Turnpike Avenue, East Main Road, and West Main Road in our school zones, I'm afraid that it's a matter of when and not if that something serious happens again.
All right, could we just. All right, well, let's, let's address the motion that's on the table. Can you refresh our memory? The motion is to move $30,000 from the DPW Maintenance Ground Line and move it to the Police Budget's Traffic Enforcement line?
Correct.
Motion in a second. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Mr. Benmeyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie? Dr. Ryan? Dr. Ryan?
Oops, sorry. I was muted. Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
Now I will make a motion to provisionally approve DPW budget at $3,026,744.
Second.
Motion in second. Are there any questions? All right. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie? And Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes five to one.
And then a motion to provisionally approve the Police Department budget at $7,198,471.
Second.
You might want to approve the grand total DPW budget. That's true.
You want me to do that first?
Yeah.
Okay. Vote, oh, I've already made a motion in a second to do the Police Department budget.
I think we'll go to page sixty.
Sorry.
We did that as well.
Yes.
So we have a motion in seconds. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Ellie?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Now if you go to page seventy-four. Just provisionally approve the grand total DPW budget.
A motion to provisionally approve the total DPW budget at $4,878,108.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
A second. Ms. Jukuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Nay.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes five to one.
Now if you go to page nine. So now, at this point, all revenues and expenditures have been reviewed. Each have been provisionally approved. Both revenues and expenditures are balanced, and we ask you to give provisional approval to the total amount of $69,074,575 for revenues and for expenditures.
Now, is this a, are we at tentative approval stage now, or provisional? Still provisional, right?
Approval.
Provisional approval of the total town budget revenues and expenditures at $69,074,575.
Seconded.
Motion in second, and I believe there was someone who wanted to ask a question.
Hello, this is Tom Grebe, 110 Sayor Drive. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. There are a couple of serious issues with the pension funding in the Fiscal Year 22 budget, smoothing and the contribution amount. This budget and the audit agreed on the pension liability of 112 million. However, the budget uses a figure of 60 million instead of the auditor certified assets of 55.7 million as the starting point to derive the town payment for the pension fund. This significantly reduces the payment by the town in Fiscal Year 22. Mr. Rayner explained that this extra $4.3 million resulted from a smoothing method to mitigate the yearly swings in the market returns of our pension plan assets. He agreed to provide further detail about this smoothing, but has not done so yet. Knowing the details behind that smoothing before deciding on this budget is extremely important. Is $4.3 million really the appropriate amount to be added for the smoothing of the pension plan contribution based on our investment experience? We did lose $1.6 billion in Fiscal Year 2020, or 2.8%. We did lose one point six billion dollars in fiscal year twenty twenty or two point eight percent, but four point three million dollars is almost eight percent addition to the portfolio assets, and it is six hundred thousand dollars more than even our target of six point seven five percent return would have provided. That's hard to make sense of. I submit that what is being smoothed by this technique may not be our market returns, but rather the increase in our unfunded liability, which went up ten million dollars in that year. Of course, without the details of the smoothing, we are unable to make that determination. Over the last four years, the town unfunded pension liability has been growing at an accelerated rate. Only a small portion of that is due to investment experience, but it is possible the smoothing technique is not making that distinction. Adding in large, nonexistent assets to and reducing the actuarially determined contribution payment under these circumstances is compounding the accelerating unfunded liability problem. The use of the smoothing algorithm seems to have begun in two thousand and seventeen. Prior to two thousand and seventeen, the budgets used the audited asset number to derive our pension fund contribution. In the four years since two thousand and seventeen, the asset figures in the budgets have been made artificially larger than the audited asset figures regardless of market returns. These asset increases have reduced the budget pension payment in every one of those four years, whether we had a good year or a bad year in the market. During that time, our net unfunded pension liability has ballooned from thirty-nine point eight million to fifty-six point eight million. That is over forty percent increase in just those four years. Furthermore, the rate of that growth has been accelerating. This clearly indicates that during the last four years, the town has underfunded our pension obligations. The smoothing has been, at the very least, an exacerbating problem. Now is the time before the unfunded liability gets out of control to understand and reevaluate the use of this smoothing algorithm, which has been artificially inflating our pension assets for the last four years, thereby reducing town payments to the pension fund and increasing unfunded liability. The further question should be, why was the smoothing artifice adopted by the town in two thousand and seventeen? Its use is counter to the conservative six point seven five percent return policy voted on by the council. Was the council ever publicly made aware of this smoothing calculation change? If so, I'd like to know where, when they were asked to approve that policy change and how it was described. I reviewed the council agendas for what I believe would have been the appropriate period and could find no such agenda item, nor could I find an agenda item discussing smoothing on the surprisingly few pension investment committee meeting agendas. The use of a smoothing algorithm should be a council decision. It should be further noted that this type of smoothing is not permitted for private corporations. Just because municipal municipalities can use it does not mean Portsmouth should. I spent a lot of time on the smoothing issue because it is truly a complicated but potentially very important issue. However, the other very obvious pension underfunding issue in this budget is easy to understand. When adding the defined pension contributions for each of the town departments, the contribution sum to a considerably smaller pension payment than the actuarially actuarially determined contribution arrived at on page one-ten of the budget. It is certainly not appropriate to be funding the defined benefit pension at an even lower level than the questionably smooth amount, smoothed amount shown on page one-ten. Do the addition yourself and you will see the total payment is about five hundred and ninety thousand dollars lower than the payment calculated in the budget, which itself may actually be too low. The council should not approve this budget before an in-depth research into both these pension underfunding issues and definitive answers have been provided. The council needs to assure not only themselves and the residents, but also the present and future pension recipients that the funding provided in the fiscal year twenty-two budget is adequate and the calculate calculations are properly aligned with town policy before the budget is approved. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Do any of the council members have any questions? All right, hearing done. I will defer to Mr. Rayner, do you wish to comment this time?
I have nothing to add, we don't determine whether it's we don't determine the smoothing or the fair market value. This is all done by the actuaries. The chart that's referred to in the budget, if you look all the way to the left of that, it said fair market value at some point in two thousand and seventeen, the wrong figure was put in there, but that's just a homemade chart. That's not something that's used by either the auditors who are determining fair market value or the purpose of the audit, or the actuaries who are using the smoothing constant to determine the actuarially required contribution. So there's nothing further I can add.
Yes, I'm I'm sorry, I thought I was still unmuted. On page one oh nine and one-ten, those are the actuarial reports, and you will see that on page one oh nine, they actually do use the sixty million dollar figure in determining what's on page one-ten is the what used to be called the ARC payment for the budget of twenty 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 twenty-two. So these numbers are indeed used in this. The question is, how can they, with what I've told you, how can they possibly be right? If you go back to two thousand and seventeen, we had a great year in the market, we had, we we got almost, we earned almost six million dollars or over six million dollars, actually, which is more than double what we normally would earn, or at least on the six, on the six point seven five percent return. And they still added six hundred thousand dollars to the assets before calculation of the the ARC payment. That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. This year, when we've lost money, they've added money again. If you're always adding money regardless of what your your market returns really are, plus or minus, you're never going to put the right amount back into the into the pension fund. I don't see, I mean, it's just just logic. We asked you before, Mr. Rayner, if you would provide us what the smoothing techniques were. We don't know if this smoothed over one year, three years, five years, ten years. We don't know how it's done, and and those are the sorts of things we need to know in order to see this. The other thing is that if you do believe that that comes out with the right number, which in this case is five billion six hundred and seventy-nine thousand two hundred and two dollars, why don't the pension funds from the various departments add up to that number? They don't, they're almost six hundred thousand dollars less.
Thank you, Mr. Grebe, I think at this point, what we have on the table is a motion to provisionally approve the budget, and I believe that until we have a final vote to approve the budget, I will allow the staff to consider your comments, and I'll have to sit here and try to answer on the fly. So I'd like, I would ask the town council to vote on the motion that's been made and seconded. Ms. Jujuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. The next item is new business. We will hear a presentation from the Rhode Island Public Transit Authority concerning bus shelters from Mr. Norton, chief of strategic advancement and director of service planning and scheduling. Mr. Brown is in the audience, if you please raise his hand. Mr. Brown, are you in the audience, if you raise your hand? How about Mr. Norton? Okay, well, I guess we, let's do that, because the next item would be a motion relating to this, their presentation. Mr. Kelly, it's your motion, would you like to move this to the next agenda, so it's a one package deal, or? You don't need to vote on it tonight? All right, then, seeing that the people from are unavailable and Mr. Kelly's, the next items for Kelly's is tied to it. The motion to move it to the next agenda, do I hear a motion to table to the next agenda?
So moved.
Second, so. Motion in second to move items one and two to the next agenda, and we will move to. Ms. Jujuzo?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Should pass the six to zero, we'll move to the next item, which is the request approval towards the twenty twenty-one contract.
Could everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Vice President, members of the council. What we have before you are the paving results, the bid results for the RFP that we advertised for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two paving. We had five contractors bid on the RFP, and PJ Keating was the lowest qualified bidder. I would like to request that the FY twenty-one, twenty-two paving be awarded to PJ Keating, thank you.
So moved.
Second. Just one question, Mr. Mr. Woodhead. Can we ask that when they're done paving the streets, especially around high walking areas like the high school, that they repaint in the stop lines and crosswalks, specifically Dexter Street and Freeborn weren't done?
Yeah, absolutely, I have that on my list already for a few of those roads already, but yes, we will take care of that.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Jujuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Passes six to zero, that's the item is correspondence. Accepted place on file.
Motion to receive and place on file. Second.
Second. Ms. Jujuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Dr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. That brings us to future meetings. Next four meetings are scheduled on consecutive days, May seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, and they are all about the comprehensive plan, so I would encourage anyone who's interested in the plans for the future of this town to attend those meetings and submit your comments. And then after that, our next regular meeting, May twenty-four, and then June ninth and June fourteen, I'm sorry, June ninth is the budget hearing. Are there any questions or comments for the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in the second to adjourn. Ms. Jujuzo?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Dr. Meyer?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Kelly? Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes six to zero, thank you so much, everyone, and we will see you on May seventeenth.
Good all.
Thank you.